Good evening. I'm David Assad, the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 15, 2022. We are meeting at one government center in the first-floor hearing room. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV, Craig Salvador, is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Our recording secretary this evening is the lady to my immediate right, Ms. Nina Kruger. Present this evening are permanent members, John Frank, Jim Corkins, Dan Dupere, Vice Chairman Joe Pereira, and alternate member Ricky Sahadi. Nina, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A as amended?
Yes.
I declare the September 15, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners or butters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I again advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, water, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a City Ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you're here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all municipal member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We, as a board, have developed and adopted such a policy, which ensure provides for citizen input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of this meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Are there any questions before we begin? Hearing none. We'll start with Old Business Agenda Item 01. Abbott &amp; Farnham LLC, Care of Attorney Thomas P. Kelloran, 100 Weaver Street, MAP T3, Lot 15. In this particular project, I believe we received some communication from Attorney Kelloran, dated September 8. That says, even though he's here, I'll read your letter, Tom. Please be advised that the above-capsured matter is scheduled to be heard at the September 15, 2022, hearing of the Fall River Zoning Board of Appeals. Please be further advised that my client needs additional time to gather information to utilize in his presentation to the board. Accordingly, we would ask that this matter be tabled or continued to the board's October hearing, which I believe is scheduled for October 20, 2022. Nina, is that correct? Yes. And encloses the check for $350 to cover the tabling fee. So we said if he wasn't here, he was going to have somebody else here, but we have the pleasure of having Attorney Kelloran here in front of us. So we haven't opened this particular petition up. We've taken no evidence and stolen the administrative stages. That's your request to table it to the October meeting?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
So the board needs to entertain and act on it, but I'm going to ask you before we get there, is October going to be sufficient, or do you need more time? And not that, we're just coming, coming, coming. I think there may be some people here that are...
Yeah.
So I'm asking the question whether or not October's going to be the meeting we go forward, or do you need in addition...
There's a very fair question. I asked that of my client, and they seem confident that October would be the hearing that they'd be able to go forward, which we should have this additional information by then.
Okay? Thank you. So for anybody who came in favor or opposed to this petition, there is a motion made by Attorney Kelloran for the purposes of saying rather than go forward and present their petition this evening, they want to table the matter once again to October 20th meeting so they can do more investigatory work and present the board with more information. So the board needs to vote on whether or not we're going to allow them to continue it to October 20th, or whether or not we say no, we're not, and either go forward this evening or deny it. So, members of the... So is there anybody out there that has any comment on the motion? I will allow, if anyone is... Yes, sir.
Joseph Cavalo, 400 Columbia Street.
Yes, sir.
So I was here in July, and it was continued until...
Today.
Today. So we keep kicking the can down the street.
That's what you're hearing, the chairman kind of asked Mr. Kelloran if this is it or whether or not there's going to be another one. But to be, just in terms of presentation, it's not, it's not your typical petition. It's rather a large petition, kind of complicated. If he needs more time to do it, I can understand the requests coming through. But I know that you all have been coming on a regular basis, and I want to make sure that I hear from you or the board hears from you before we take any action.
So if I may...
Yes, please. I want you to continue.
So, July, the day before the meeting, and I, I don't have the date in front of me, I called Farnham and whatever the other name is on this company.
Yep.
Developer.
Abbott &amp; Farnham.
Abbott, thank you. Abbott &amp; Farnham. And when I called, I thought that I might get a receptionist, I'd identify myself, and I was a little taken back because it was Mr. Perez, is it? Lopez or Perez?
One of the principals' names is Edward Perez.
Edward Perez?
Edward Perez.
Is what Mr. Kelloran is saying is the principal. I'm looking for the articles of organization, but anyway, go ahead. Please continue, sir.
So it was Mr. Perez that actually answered the phone in his car. And I told him that I was a citizen of Fall River and interested in exactly what the project entails. And I said, gee, you know, what are the plans like? And he said, well, we don't have any plans yet. And I thought that was kind of unusual. I mean, you're talking 350, 346 apartments, and it was scheduled for that night here, and he said he didn't have anything. So I'm not questioning Attorney Kelloran at all, or even Mr. Perez for that matter, but it does seem unusual to me that it would take this long with this many continuances to get some resolution, one way or the other, and I'm opposed to it.
You're opposed to the continuance, or you're opposed to the project?
Well, both.
Okay. So let's just leave, the only thing that's before the board this evening is the motion to continue.
Got it. So I'm opposed to the continuance.
I got it. So I'll let, if Attorney Kelloran wants to respond, but let me, let the chairman just respond. The petition couldn't have been filed unless there were a set of plans that were stamped and that met the filing requirement. So there obviously was a set of plans that was presented to the board. I can't speak for your conversation with Mr. Perez, but from the outset, we've had a set of plans, it was properly filed, and the board has the authority to act. The issue singularly before the board is Mr. Kelloran representing Mr. Perez, I shouldn't say Mr. Perez, but Abbott &amp; Farnham has said that they need more time to put their presentation together. They've paid a substantial fee to the city for the purposes of having the board review it. I shrug my shoulders and tell you, sir, I don't know, other than the board hasn't taken any evidence. I don't, we've reviewed the plan so we can be prepared for the hearing, but beyond that, nothing else has happened.
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Is there anyone else in favor or opposed?
Oh.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask a question?
You can ask a question, certainly. But I don't want to take any evidence, though.
No.
Go ahead. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Mary Ann Crozick.
Yes.
The question is...
Can we have an address, please?
2684 North Main Street.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned early on, when you were just introducing this...
I say lots of things. Go ahead.
That we needed to have evidence or, you know...
So the rules...
So as a citizen, you know, what do I, what do I come up with? Do you know what I mean? What type of evidence?
So I will refer you to Chapter 40, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A.
Okay.
Section 10 that deals with variances. I think this is a special permit. Let me see. Variance and special permit.
Yeah.
So you need, so you need to look at two things. Chapter 40A, Section 10, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the ordinances of the City of Fall River dealing with the board's authority to grant variances and the board's authority to grant special permits.
Okay.
The standards, I would recommend you speak to a lawyer, but if you're going to do, no, just the board, I can only do so much as the chairman. So those are the avenues that Mr. Kelloran is coming before the board and saying, we think we have something unique with either the shape, the soil condition, the topography to get a variance, or we fit into this other category for a special permit that says if it's a finding by the board that it's either not less detrimental to the neighborhood, then the board can make a determination that yes, we can do it. The other thing you need to look at is the ordinance itself and see where this property is located and what the dimensional requirements are and what the parking requirements are. And your argument, either if you're in favor or opposed to this particular project, is tell us why you're being affected by whatever it is they're looking for.
Yeah.
Whatever relief they're looking for from the zoning bylaw, and why you're either in favor of it or opposed to it.
Okay.
And then this board will listen and make a determination, yes or no.
Okay. Thank you.
Attorney Kelloran, was that a fair assessment of what...
Fair assessment.
Thank you. I saw another hand over here. Yes, sir.
Alexander Silva, 263 Pine Street. Lieutenant Cavalo, I was at the July meeting where this was scheduled. I was also at the June meeting where this was originally scheduled to appear, so this will be the third continuance. I'm just personally wondering what more information is needed for this proposal. Some of you may recall there was a Herald News article a month or so back in which it was brought to light that this, the owner marketed this property already for sale, saying it was already zoned with special permits. So if he was comfortable, or if the company, it was comfortable enough to market the property for sale, I'm just wondering why they're not comfortable enough to actually appear before the DVA and apply for this special permitting? Thanks.
Thank you.
So...
You don't have to respond if you don't want.
That's fair. Then I won't.
Thank you. Thank you. I got outside sources, you know, newspaper reports. I really don't want to take any evidence. Anyway, so we got that. It's still going to be up to Kelloran, it's going to be up to the board to decide whether or not to grant the extension of... So that's what we've got. Is there anyone else? I don't want to preclude anyone from speaking on this particular project. All right. Not seeing anyone. It's going to get a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I, in view of the size and the scope and the economic, potential economic impact on the city and other impacts, I think that we need to have as complete of a picture as possible when we do hear the proposal and move that we grant the extension until the October meeting.
I'm going to look to Attorney Kelloran one more time. October, you think, is a good date?
That's what I've been told, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. So we have Jim Corkins' motion to grant the motion to extend to October 20 of 2022. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad?
Yes.
So this petition is granted, the petition, the extension is granted till October 20. So all of you out there that are interested, October 20, 2022, same place, same time, right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Do you want to do number one now?
Sure.
Okay. Because that's yours, right? That's just an extension.
That is. South Coast.
New Business Agenda Item Number 1, South Coast Hospital Group Incorporated, Care of Attorney Thomas P. Kelloran, 305-309-317, Hanover Street, MAP M17, Lot 32, 33, and 62. The applicant puts forth a motion to extend the time for relief for a previously granted decision dated November 4, 2021. The applicant wishes to extend this variance relief for a period of six months commencing on November 4, 2022. November 4, 2022 was the date that the variance was granted. The one year's been running since that time. Under 40A, Section 10, the maximum, we can grant a six-month extension. That's where our authority comes from. So let's let Attorney Kelloran tell us why he needs a six-month extension.
Thank you. For the record, Attorney Thomas Kelloran, representing the applicant, South Coast Hospital Groups, Group's Inc., they were before you last year and secured a variance and special permit from the board issued in November of 2021. Part of the work that was going to be undertaken under the variance relief that was granted was going to be a demolition of certain structures, and those properties that are at issue are going to be utilized for parking. And there is an existing tenant at one of the structures at the property, and they're going through the eviction process. This is being handled by the seller of the property. South Coast does not currently own it. And this has held up, South Coast being able to exercise the rights that were granted to them by the variance. So we're asking this board to grant a six-month extension of time. They're optimistic that this tenant will be out of the property, and they'll be able to exercise their variance within this six-month extension.
Okay. Thank you. Members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone here that came out this evening in favor of this petition, this motion, or opposed to this motion? Okay? Thank you. Motion to...
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue. John Frank, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jim Corkins. Left ear is better. Yeah.
Or motion, actually, motion to...
It was the motion, your motion.
To extend.
Corkin's second, to extend it next month from November 4, okay, 2022. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad?
Yes.
Okay, so that's...
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll go to, let me get rid of this, Agenda Item Number 2, Janet Harrison, 18 Holland Street, MAP T21, Lot 30. The applicant seeks a variance to demolish the existing single-family house and divide the property into three residential lots, waiving requirements for area, lot coverage, setbacks, and frontage in an S single-family zoning district. Good evening, Mr. Tomlin. Identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Tomlin from Northeast Engineers and Consultants, here representing Janet Harrison for the application for a variance. That's before you for this property, which is located on the corner of Holland Street in North Main Street. The property itself is, as you had mentioned, it's located in a single-family residential district. It currently has 28,562 square feet with 94.34 feet of frontage on North Main Street and an additional 230 feet of frontage on Holland Street. When this, when this project was initially brought to me, the intent was to come to this board seeking a variance to create one additional lot. In addition, obviously, we will divide the existing lot into two lots, creating one additional lot. There's, obviously, there's plenty of area and frontage to meet zoning and to do that. The issue with that proposal was that the location of the existing dwelling, which is a pre-existing non-conforming structure, it kind of sits right in the middle of the property. So in order to create a conforming lot with 100 feet of frontage on Holland Street, whether you come up from North Main Street or you come down from the eastern property boundary, it puts you right smack in the middle of the house. So there's no way to do a division of this property without relief. So the initial intent was just to come to this board, seeking relief, asking for a reduction in the minimum amount of frontage, and create a second lot. Since that, since this has been brought to me, a few things have happened. Janet Harrison, who was living in the dwelling at the time, has been, she's currently in a nursing home. It's temporary, it's not long-term. She's in for rehabilitation purposes, but she's no longer in the house. When she does come home, the house is going to have to be ADA accessible. The other issue that she has with the house is, within the past several months, this house has been condemned by the building department. So there's a substantial amount of work that has to take place to the house to bring it up to standards. Never mind make it ADA compliant, just to bring it up to standards where it's in the habit of it. So, you know, after reviewing that, it made sense to me in looking at this application that, you know, if that is in fact the case, we should, you know, with the hardship of her having, you know, initially, she wasn't planning on putting, you know, she knew she had to make some repairs to the house, but not the amount of repairs that are going to be required to, for her to be able to move back home. It makes no sense to try to keep the existing dwelling. But to, to raise the dwelling and construct a new dwelling, it just, it's going to be, it's really not economically feasible for her, you know, given, you know, you can look at the shape and the topography of the lot. In my opinion, it makes sense just to kind of divide this evenly, create three, you know, substandard lots, but they are conforming when you look at, you know, what we have in the, you know, in the neighborhood, in the abutting area. They're certainly in conformity with the addition, with those lots, which are all, for the most part, substandard. And I know this board has looked at, in the past, projects like this where demolition is involved, and they have been, looked favorable upon granting relief to help out in that situation. So we're just here tonight, again, asking for relief from, you know, due to the topography of the property and the lot shape, topography being, you know, if you look at how this property slopes from North Main Street up to the eastern property boundary, there's a 30-foot drop. It goes from like elevation 62 up on the eastern boundary now to about 32 on North Main Street. So there's a lot of factors in play here. In my opinion, development standard, the easiest thing to do would just start with a clean slate, come in here, create nice, clean lot lines, nice, clean lots, and, and she'd be able to build a house that, that would be ADA compliant, that she could live in, have the additional lot, which was, it's my understanding, was going to be for a, one of her children, and then the other, the additional lot would actually pay for the construction of her house, the reconstruction of the house. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
I agree with some of the things that you say. You have a large lot. You can get two conforming lots. You don't need to be before the board. The hardships that you're talking about seem very personal to the petitioner in not necessarily dealing with shape, topography, soil condition. You mentioned the topographical change, but you end up with two lots, and you'll have to develop whatever, where you have Lot 3, where the highest is, down to Lot 1, where you have the lowest of 34 feet of the topographical line. We're also, and I know that we've raised, I've raised it before, under our ordinance, 86-34, Subsection C, no yard or lot existing on the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived shall be reduced in dimension or area below the minimum requirement set forth in this chapter. Yards or lots created after such effective date shall meet at least the minimum requirements established by this chapter. So you got that prohibition in the beginning of our ordinances. Yes, I agree that this board has the power under 86-482, Subsection C, to grant relief, but I think that relief is, has to be under an application of 40A, Section 10, shape, topography, soil condition, hardship. I understand the condition of the house. It's probably better to raise it and put a new house up there, but you end up with, instead of two conforming lots that you can actually get out of this project, your request is for three non-conforming lots. And most of the lots around you, there's a couple, there's a couple that are, I think, pre-existing non-conforming, but for the most part, have greater than the 10,000 and the 8,000 square feet that you're proposing on this particular project. Those are just my feelings about it, Jeff. I don't know...
Well, I, you know, in looking at this...
So I guess I want you to tell me something about the, how is it that, if I can get two perfectly conforming lots, how do I make the transition from that and the prohibition in our ordinance into three non-conforming lots?
Well, again, in looking at past filings and stuff and different things...
I know, but you know that past filings aren't precedent-setting for the board.
I understand that.
You know this.
I do understand that, but when I look at school properties, Brayton Ave. School, the old Henry Lord School...
This isn't, this isn't the Brayton Avenue School project.
I know, but those, there was no shape or soil topography issues there, and they were divided into lots that were substandard. Due to, I'm assuming, due to the cost associated with the demolition, rehabilitating the property, and making it attractive to the neighborhood. I get that. And that's all we're looking to do on a much smaller scale with this project. I mean, the topography is an issue. Is it directly related to, you know, how this is going to be divided? You know, I don't know, but I mean, there is a topographic hardship. The shape of the lot itself would make it, we can't create a second standard lot, so we would need a substandard lot for a second lot anyways to keep the existing dwelling.
Oh, to keep the existing dwelling. Yes, yes.
Well, it doesn't make financial sense. If we're only getting one additional lot, to raise the existing dwelling, because there is value there, even though it is condemned. It'd be a lot cheaper to fix that up than to build a new...
I was trying to figure out if I was heading, if I was heading west on it, if I got the lot number 378, how much is on the side? Is it 30 feet there to give you the 100-foot frontage and to keep, to do something with lot?
If you add 30 feet to that, it, it does cut through the house. If you...
It does. That's what I was, that's what I was looking for, one of the lines to show me whether it did or it didn't.
So no matter which way you come in from, whether it be North Main Street or the eastern property boundary with 100 feet, you're going to, you're going to go through the existing house. So, you know, the options being, keep the existing house to try to save some costs and create a second lot, which would be substandard, we'd need relief on that for frontage, or do we just rehab the whole property altogether, create three conforming, well, not conforming, but three new lots with, you know, new dwellings on them that...
Go ahead.
Nice straight property lines, and, and really, I mean, it would be, it'd be similar to what's out in the neighborhood. No, 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 some of those, you're right, are probably pre-existing non-conforming lots. I haven't researched all the abutting properties, but it would certainly, it wouldn't be out of line with the rest of the neighborhood, creating these, I mean, we're not asking for a big reduction in the area.
I wish the planning board of the city council would give us that authority under our ordinance, because yes, that would be a very good way to look at it, and I think the board may consider that sometimes, but I just would, I just wish they'd change the ordinance to let us do it. Go ahead.
And the only reason I mention those school properties is, in my opinion, it's a similar type of thing, where relief was granted without, you know, necessarily there being a, it, just relief was granted to, to make it effective to rehab the, those properties.
I understand.
And that's, that's all we're kind of looking to do here.
There are four other members of this board, and plus, there's people in the, let's see what they got to say.
Sure.
Thank you. Is, members of the board, any questions specifically about this particular project for Mr. Tomlin?
One of my, I guess my question is, the only thing under 40, Section 40 that you've that you've brought up is the topography. Yes or no, would that be a problem if this were two lots or three lots? It's the same issue.
It's, it's a similar issue, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay? So, there we've got it, members of the board, we've got the petition to create three substandard lots. That's what the petition is for. Do we think that they've met the hardship requirement of the 40A? Have they shaped topography, soil condition, and a hardship that meets it? If they have, then somebody should make a motion to grant. If we say no, then it should be a motion to deny.
I'll make a motion to grant.
John Frank, motion to grant.
Demolition of the existing dwelling?
Demolition of existing-
Are the sheds going too?
Everything, yes.
All structures, demolition-
All structures demo.
Yeah.
Site plan.
Site, yeah, so we'll go back to the, so, I've got to use my cheat sheet here. No building permit shall be issued until the site plan has been approved by the site plan review committee, and no site preparation work shall be commenced prior to approval of the site plan by the site plan review committee.
Sounds good. There isn't one abutting property that meets the standard, so, you go three in each direction, and 10,000 square foot lots, I know it's a 12,000 square foot district, but every other property is 4,000, 7,000, 8,000, 8,000, 5,000, say 8,000, so it's going to be bigger than all the others.
Yeah, these aren't small properties.
No, I get it.
I mean, they're substandard, but they're not small.
And the position of the house-
He's got his motion there, wait a minute.
Position of the house on the, where it is, I can see, it's close to the street, and it's kind of right in the middle on the land, it definitely, this is more suited to making better division.
And is one of the other conditions going to be, all the setback requirements will be, except for frontage?
They can't get a building permit for them, they can't.
No, no, but I just want to make sure that the variance that he's proposing, so you have a waiver of frontage, but the side yard, front yard, rear yard, those dimensional requirements for the envelope are going to be met?
That is correct.
Unless you-
I'm reading as lot coverage on here, you don't need a lot coverage.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'd be asking for it just because, you know, with the smaller-sized lot, meeting the 25%, you know, if you're going from a 12,000 to a 10,000, or a 12,000 to an 8,000, you know, that 25% really doesn't leave you with a lot of impervious area. So, we are asking for a reduction. I think it's noted, we're asking to increase it from 25% to 35% on the 8,000 square foot lot, and 25% to 30% for the other two, the 10,000 square feet lot, lots, I should say.
Okay. As noted on the plan, then, lot coverage. There's no building envelopes on here, so.
There is none.
No, we would fully comply with setback requirements. Yes.
That's my motion.
So, that's John's motion. We have a second.
I'll give it a second.
Jim Corkin, second, okay? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupair?
No.
No? Joe Pereira?
No.
Joe Pereira, no. Chairman Assad, no. The vote is three to two. That motion is denied, the petition is denied. Thank you, Mr. Tallman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, 4M6 Resnick LLC, 00 Fifth Street, MAP N20, Lot 34. The applicant seeks a variance to construct a five-unit multifamily dwelling in a CBD, central business district, and an AOD, arts overlay district, waiving front and rear yard setback requirements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, again, for the record, Attorney Thomas Kalaran loves us at 350 North Main Street in Fall River, Massachusetts. I represent the applicant. With me is Jeff Tallman, the design engineer. What we have before you is a, currently a vacant parcel of land with fronting on Fifth Street and also on Spring Street. It's completely asphalted out as a paved parking area as it presently sits. This property is somewhat unique in that it sits in both the CBD district as well as the arts overlay district. When we originally submitted the application, we were, thought there would be a need for zoning relief to allow for the development of a five-unit structure as the CBD district requires that the multifamily use would be at least 20 units. But the arts overlay district does permit the construction of a four-to-six unit dwelling, and that's what, exactly what we're proposing here is actually right in the middle of five units. So, I would suggest to the board that no variance relief is required with regard to the number of units, although that may have been referenced in the initial, initial application. The structure itself will require some front yard and rear yard setback relief, as the rear yard is set back approximately five feet, and the front yard is set back seven feet. The requirements being for a front yard 12 feet and rear yard would be 10 feet. So, there is some minimal relief required with regard to the rear and front yard setback. There is proposed 10 parking spaces, so we'd be able to provide two parking, off-street parking spaces per unit. Again, the parcel, as it currently sits, is asphalted out to the boundary lines of the property. There will be a reduction in impervious area, there'll be some green space added. There's also room, and it's showed on the plan, a area for a dumpster pad on the, I'm sure that'd be the north, yeah, north side of the property. So, again, we're dealing with a piece of property that's really sitting there vacant, except, again, it's asphalted out. We'll be adding in some green space. The arts overlay district specifically contemplates increasing downtown housing opportunities, and we think that this particular use, this proposed project, meets that requirement that's specifically identified in the arts overlay district. Again, I think that relief that we're seeking is quite minimal in that two small setbacks for the front yard and rear yard. Obviously, if the board has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
When I look at the plan, the one, I saw the five, five-foot rear yard setback requested, the one to the far, I guess the northeast, that unit, it looks like the proposed patio, is that right on the line, or is it still going to be a five-foot offset there?
That would definitely be on the property, but there would be an offset. Now, the patio itself doesn't need to meet the setback requirement.
No, no, as I'm looking at the line, you said the five-year, so the five, five-foot rear setback, that's to the building, not to the patio.
Correct. There was a revised plan that was submitted, I don't know if you have a copy of that, that had like bump outs on the back and front.
This one was, this one was received September 9th, so this is going to be the one that we're looking at?
Yeah, so that-
So, the only relief, the only relief on this particular project is front and rear yard?
Correct.
Other than that-
There would be a five-foot reduction on both front and side area.
No, no, but that's side yard too?
I mean, I mean, front and rear.
Front and rear was the only ones that I found.
Correct.
Okay. That, because you've got the parking, you've got, okay.
And obviously, the hardship in this would be the lot shape because of the depth of the lot, where the building would be located, it's really restrictive, being 54 feet along Fifth Street, and it does widen out a little bit, but not drastically.
Yeah, no, you got to, that's the build, that's the parking lot, that's the way it's-
Correct.
Yeah, got it, okay. Members of the board, any questions on this particular project?
Yeah, I was just confused, I drove by, and I didn't think it was this property, because this is the one that, the one we approved last week.
The one, the one behind me.
They said they were going to get this and put a parking lot in.
Yeah, this, this one, I didn't get right over by the bus. This one, I, well, that would have been the natural for the guy behind, but this one is by itself, yeah. Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Sir, you jumped up, are you in favor or opposed? I'll get to you, I'll get to the opposition in a minute. So, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? No. Anyone opposed? Yes, sir, will you identify yourself for the record and tell us what your opposition is?
Yes, Keith Michon, representative of the Fall River Educators Association, located at 178 Fourth Street. Our property is an office building, it abuts the parking lot.
178?
178.
178, the little, the little brick building?
The little brick building, yeah. And we have a rear exit, it's kind of unique that we step out of the building into the parking lot. So, our property line is about six inches off of the building.
Yes.
So, we're concerned about-
I know the building well. I almost bought it, that's why I'm saying, because it's right there, you walk out and you're there.
Right. So, we're concerned about waiving that rear, rear allowance would affect our, our building.
Where your building is, what, well, you'll have to deal whoever the owner is, but you'll, that building sits right on, your building sits right on the lot that you have, that's it. There's a little, maybe, if it's six inches, you're lucky.
Right.
But it opens into that parking lot, but there's, as I remember, oh, I shouldn't, there's nothing in your deed that says you have the right to pass and repass on this piece of property to get you access. I don't know how it ever got carved out, but it is, the building exists. The building are far, to the east of your building, and what's next to your building is the parking lot.
Right, correct.
I mean, so, the waiver of frontage and rear yard really don't affect the parking lot area, but I'll let Attorney Kalaran answer instead of me.
I mean, you said exactly what I was thinking, Mr. Chairman. So, the building to be, that's being proposed is a good distance away from the existing office building that sits on that corner. So, if they're exiting out of the rear to a parking area, they're still going to be exiting out of the rear into a parking area. As far as I'm aware, and I haven't done the title to the property, I'm not aware of any existing easements that allow that office building to exit out onto that. Having said that, it certainly appears that there'll probably be a little grass area.
Wait, wait, let me, this is the zoning board of appeals. This board is not going to grant easements, I'm not going-
Nor am I suggesting, Mr. Chairman, all I'm saying is that there's not going to be anything there that's impeding their ingress and egress.
Anything that currently exists, it's going to be exactly as it is. So, I want to make sure that you understand that, sir. The building, if you saw, I think Frank, yeah, so, the building is way, it's off to the east of you. Nothing is really changing there. Whoever the, whoever 4M6 Resnick LLC is, you may want to talk to them and see if you can do something for, but that's outside of the scope of this board's authority to do, but I understand your oppositions.
I didn't get a chance to see the plans before coming here tonight, I just wanted you to consider my building.
No, but did you see, did you get a good look at them? Okay.
I would add, initially, this was all one property, where that building was, in this particular piece, and there was a relief granted, there was a variance granted, I want to say back in the 80s.
It had to be 1982 when I was looking at the building. That's why I know about it, and said, what a lovely, what a lovely building, and what a parking lot, until John Miranda said, hey, this is all you get.
Yeah, initially, it was all one owner, so that, I don't think there are any easements in place or anything like that, but stepping out on the private property now and will continue to, it's not going to change.
Well, that's, that's why I'm suggesting that maybe they talk to whoever the owner is. But anyway, so anyway, members, anyone else opposed to this petition? Okay. Members of the board, you've heard the presentation, have they met the requirements under 40A, section 10? Should we grant a variance, should it be denied?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Joe Pereira, motion to approve. Any conditions?
The obvious condition of-
Site plan review?
Site plan review.
Okay. All right, so we have Joe Pereira's motion to grant, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Dan Dupair?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So, that petition is granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Agenda item number four, Daniel Quintel, care of attorney Peter A. Solino, 1313 South Main Street, MAP G24, Lot 3. The applicant seeks a variance to demolish a portion of the existing property location and convert the existing structure into two separate lots, with each lot containing a separate mixed-use building, waiving all dimensional requirements in a BL local business in R4 two-family district. The applicant is also, seeks a special permit to reduce parking requirements.
Thank you for purposes of the record, my name is Peter Solino, I'm a lawyer with offices at 550 Locust Street in Fall River. The subject property, 1313 South Main Street, is the former Lim Corp. and Pappas Insurance Agency. The proposal before you is to demolish a portion of the existing building, almost through the middle of the building, taking away five feet from each building.
That's where they were, that's where they were connected, now they're going to be separated.
By 10 feet total.
By 10 feet, five and five on each side.
So, the proposal is to separate the lot, creating Lot A and B, as shown on the plan, leaving the existing buildings on their respective lots. The proposal includes a mixed-use concept in which there would be commercial space on the first floor and residential dwelling units above. In terms of the actual relief sought, I've certainly been before the board many times, this property straddles two zoning districts. However, the majority of the property sits in a BL. So, my analysis is focused on the BL, because it's been the general interpretation of the board, that where the majority sits, that's the controlling zoning. So, in that lens, there is no lot coverage requirement in the BL district. We have enough frontage, it's 50 feet of frontage in a BL, and each of the separate lots has 104 and 106 respectively. The area is sufficient in terms of the proposal, and the outside side yard setbacks are sufficient. The relief for setback pertains to that middle piece whereby we're removing a portion of the building, and so, there needs to be a 10-foot side yard setback, and we're only going to have five in this proposal on Lot A and Lot B. Additionally, the existing structure sits mighty close to the rear of the property line, abutting the car wash, and so, as a result of that, we have a request for rear yard setbacks on Lot A and B. The existing structure on proposed Lot A is only one foot from the property line, as it sits, and the existing structure on Lot B is seven feet from the rear property line as it sits. And so, that's the genesis of the request for a variance for rear and side yard setback. When I filed my initial application, I also included a request for parking, and then Dan Aguirre and Mr. Gordadzki went back and forth, and so, ultimately, the conclusion came up through this detailed parking table on the bottom of the plan here, that the proposed spaces should be sufficient. I just want to make sure everybody has the last one dated September 9th. Is that the plan everybody's looking at?
I've got one, Dave, yes.
Okay, all right. And so, you see the parking-
September 9th receives the 13th.
Okay, yes.
Updated with number three that tells us all about the angles.
Exactly, right. So, Mr. Aguirre required Mr. Gordadzki to do a detailed analysis of the parking layout, the parking table, and the requirements, measure the spaces and the aisles. So, I would submit to the board that I think as a result of that analysis, it doesn't appear that we need parking relief that I thought we needed when we initially filed the petition in August.
Attorney Solino, what, I don't, the only piece, and I agree with your analysis about the majority being in the BL district, but the R4 district, is that, will there be apartments, is there something happening in that northeast corner? Or the north, yeah, the northeast corner of Lot Number B?
Yes, because-
So, that, so some of that is going to be in the R4 residential district?
Correct. And the proposal is to construct within the existing footprint, Mr. Assad, so it's not to bump anything out, it's to build out within the existing footprint?
Within, no, no, it's all within the existing building.
Correct.
But it was just, my thought was, being in the R4 district, I have a residential use in the, in that area.
Yep.
Not going up.
Not going up, no.
Not going up, the building staying on, nothing is happening.
Except for that middle piece.
Except for the five-foot, the 10-feet that are disappearing.
That's correct. And then, in terms of the substance of the request, obviously, the hardship to me here is the existing structure. I think we know it as Lim Corp. and Pappas Insurance, it's been there forever, and then this really peculiar-shaped lot line along the car wash. So, the existing structure coupled with the shape makes the site, to me, pretty unique in terms of shape.
Is there, no, I'm going to ask you this question, it's not, this is the zoning board of appeals, and I understand that it stands by Stephen T. Roy, professional land surveyor, but as I'm looking at the dock line and I'm looking at maybe what exists, is there some issue with some property lines back there?
I don't know that there's issues in the back with property lines. There's an issue of a right-of-way, and I think Mr. Shapchelowitz may talk about that this evening, but our deed says that it is subject to the rights of the car wash to pass and repass on the, what's labeled as a 10-foot right-of-way.
Yeah, no, there's that 10-foot right-of-way that exists in those deeds, because I'm a little bit familiar with 13, what is it, 1355, the old coppers, and that 10-foot right-of-way, that was always a problem.
Always an issue, and I think it still is, as far as I know.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that I know about the 10-foot, and that's always been an issue when I see attorneys from Shallowitz sitting there, but I'm looking at the line But I'm looking at the line that's drawn. And I'm just wondering whether there was some additional property line issue in the back that needs to be addressed.
I don't believe so. But I'm certainly, you know.
No, I'll let, we'll let him speak. But I'm asking, just looking at the plan, if there's something that you need to address?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. The only thing, we were careful in the consideration in the drawing of the plan to obviously not obstruct the easement, not factor that into the parking calculations, et cetera. So there's actually a Jersey barrier there now. So all of the parking is inside that Jersey barrier as proposed on this plan.
Okay.
And then lastly, in terms of the lack of, what I would perceive the lack of detriment, I think the proposal is entirely consistent with the mixed use in the neighborhood. You have a gas station, car wash, you have a bar, you have multifamily housing. So to me, this is perfect for a business local kind of proposal. Happy to entertain any questions that the board may have. My clients are in the audience. If anyone has any specific questions for Mr. Quinto, we'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, any specific questions right now? No? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is anyone opposed to this petition? Attorney Shapchelowitz, who identifies himself for the record, please.
I'm Dr. Shapchelowitz with an office at 263 Walnut Street. I'm not opposed to it. I don't have any problem with it. It's, it's more than a 10-foot right-of-way. There's a plan on file because the car wash was originally part of the Lincourt and Pappas property. So when Benavides, who was the owner of the car wash.
No, oh, Benavides, who had the car wash?
Benavides bought the car wash, I believe, in the early eighties. He bought the parcel from Lincourt and Pappas. And it was a plan on file at that point that provided for the barriers on the north side of the property, or north side of the lane to be, that was part of the approval. We don't have a problem with the setback. The building's against.
But I know, I know the deed into 1355 has had that 10-foot right-of-way. And it was just, and it was subject to the rights of others in the 10-foot right-of-way to pass and repass.
That's, that's correct.
So, and I didn't, I didn't do this.
The right-of-way is much wider than 10 feet.
No, but what I'm saying, that lot had 10 feet. And I think this one had 10 feet.
I think the coppers lot has, so that's.
It's just a 10-foot, it just references 10 feet.
Feet, yes.
But I, and the other one, I always thought had an additional.
No, they, they.
It wasn't just that singular 10-foot.
Lincourt and Pappas retained the right, the ownership of that, I'll call it the lane.
Okay.
And granted the car wash the right to pass and repass. But as part of the, I'm going to call it the approval of the subdivision at that time, there was a requirement that that barrier be put up. And when that barrier was put up, it effectively precluded Lincourt and Pappas from using the lane.
Okay.
The only one that can really use the lane is Asia 1, the old coppers.
But they could, they could.
They can only use it to the extent that they have a 10-foot right-of-way.
That's it.
And they've built.
Couldn't park, they couldn't use it, that's it.
And they, and they built into their 10-feet easement.
Okay, but the car wash, if that's who you're representing.
Correct.
You, is there anything that I'm looking at here that's interfering with your use?
Nope, not at all.
Okay. And I think my last time, I think the cement barriers, the Jersey barriers are there.
That's on, that's on the north side. And, and they can't use the lane anyway because the only use of it would be to cross the car wash. And they don't have the right to do that.
That's correct.
So in effect, that's dead land for them. And it doesn't affect, what they're doing doesn't affect.
It doesn't affect, the reason why I'm asking you that question is what they're doing, is anything that I missed when I was out there interfering with your 10-foot?
No.
Maybe wider, but right to pass and repass, whoever's going back and forth.
It'll probably be better because they'll, they'll control their own, I'm going to call it, property, which has been in the past used for.
And you have no issues with the property line along the easterly?
No.
So that's, that's not an issue? Okay. Thank you.
Separate utilities?
Yeah, that's, that's got to be.
Separate utilities?
Yes.
It's got to be separate utilities.
I'm not trying to give drainways business, but you have to.
I was just saying, it was one building. It was.
Yeah, no, no. And file the, you do your affidavit within.
I have this great form.
It's, I don't know, it's good. It works.
Thank you.
That's it? That's all you have? Separate utilities? Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else in favor? Anyone else opposed? Anyone want to tell me about this project? Okay, hearing nothing. Members of the board, have they met the burden? They don't need the parking relief. But you could make that the parking is as shown on the plan and meets the requirements. Because you don't have to grant, because I believe Attorney Solino.
I haven't made a motion.
Oh, I heard you said you know.
I was just asking, talking about separate utilities.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I heard you make a motion. Okay, so if anybody makes a motion, we should have parking there too.
Mr. Chairman, I will make.
Thank you.
That, that we grant the variance subject to planning review and that parking be maintained in accordance with the plans as submitted.
Separate utilities.
And separate utilities.
Affidavit to be filed, okay. All right, so that's Jim Corkins' motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupair. Any discussion on the motion? No. No, Dan Dupair, no discussion, okay. Dan Dupair, yes?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad?
Yes.
So that petition is granted with those conditions. Thank you. Agenda item number five. Let me get this out of the way. Okay. Tetraalt Real Estate LLC, care of attorney Peter A. Solino, 761 Highland Avenue, map M19, Lot 30. The applicant seeks a variance to convert the existing nursing home, nursing home structure into nine residential units in an S single-family zoning district, waiving the use and lot coverage requirements. The applicant also seeks a special permit to reduce parking requirements. Currently, no external changes will be done to the existing footprint. And this is the, I think this is the revised plan?
Yes, there is a revised plan in the file, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just looking for the, yeah, it is September 9th. Okay, Attorney Solino.
Good evening, for the record. Peter Solino, 550 Locust Street in Fall River. With me is my client, Aaron Tetral.
Aaron Tetral, Tetral Real Estate LLC.
Thank you.
What's your address on Highland Avenue?
1282 Highland Ave.
Fall River, Mass. So the project before you is the old Highland Manor Nursing Home. Mr. Tetral purchased it recently at a foreclosure auction. The project consists, or the proposal consists of converting the existing structure from the nursing home concept to a nine-unit building. The blend of the units, as proposed by my client, is six one-bedroom units and three two-bedroom units. That's delineated in the plan. The initial filing contained a little bit of a different parking concept. And after getting deeper into the proposal with Mr. Aguiar, we decided to submit this additional plan, which is before you this evening. And so the major change here is the parking. The second proposed plan, the plan that's in front of you this evening, contains off-street parking spaces for 18 vehicles, effectively paving the backyard, the Hanover street side, if you will, the northeast corner of the property, including 14 parking spaces, one ADA compliant handicap parking space, and three parallel-style parking spaces along the southerly boundary of the property. So if you're following my analysis here, if we have nine apartments and we have 18 spaces, we have two spaces off-street per proposed unit. And so then, that leaves us with the issue of use in an S district. And really, that's the focus here, is how to repurpose these existing structures that are so big and what can you do with them in order to make them viable? And so Mr. Tetral's proposal is to turn it into housing. He has, lives in the neighborhood. He lives on Highland Avenue, as you just heard. He purchased Dr. Dunn's house and several other houses in the neighborhood and has had successful conversions with them. And this proposal really is no different. The increased parking requires a waiver in addition to use for lot coverage. As it sits now, there is 46% lot coverage. And as proposed to accommodate the off-street parking spaces, it's 75%. So ultimately, I think with the revised plan, the variance or the zoning relief that we need relates to the use of the property as a multiple residence in a single-family district as well as a lot coverage requirement where we're supposed to have 25 feet in an S district. I would submit to you that I think this proposal is well thought out. I think the use is less dense than the nursing home use. I know we have neighborhood folks here that are going to talk about this this evening, I think for and against. But ultimately, I think this is a pretty good proposal to keep the cars off the street, repurpose a vacant, dilapidated building. And really, it's, I think, a good project for the neighborhood. So I'm happy to take any questions. Mr. Tetral certainly is here to answer anything you may have regarding the proposed construction or anything about the site.
Okay. So nothing, nothing is happening to the building itself other than being rehabbed?
That's correct. The footprint is not changing.
Footprint is not changing, no external.
No height issues.
It's going to be, it's going to be converted from whatever it is. The four walls will exist and will now have nine residential units.
Correct.
Providing off-street parking for each residential unit on the premises. So there's not going to be.
Two, yes, two off-street spaces per unit.
Two off-street for each unit. No on-street parking, so that won't be impacting the neighborhood. Okay? And the building itself, it's because it's in an S district, single-family residential, the building itself may in fact be one of the components of a hardship because you're stuck with the structure. Okay? And then the, it would be a special permit for the, I think, special permit or a variance? I think it's a special permit for the, no, but you met the, you met the parking.
Yeah, so the initial, when I initially filed it. Use and lockup, when I initially filed it, we had a different parking concept. And there was some concern from the city engineer. We went back to the drawing board, did a little bit of a deeper dive, and came back with this plan. So initially, when I filed, I was asking for waivers on parking, which I don't think we need anymore as a result of this.
I think you met that. That's what I'm saying. I think that that's gone. All right. Members of the board, any specific questions about this particular project? Okay. I see people in the audience. Is anybody here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, so this is what we're going to do. I'll start in the back of the room. And madam, I'll have you have the last word. How's that? So sir, why don't I start with you with the, yeah, yes, sir. We'll start with you. There was nobody on this side, I didn't see. Oh, I did, I'm sorry, madam, I didn't see your hand. I, I will come to you.
I live across the street.
We identify yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Lawrence Bassett. I live on Hanover Street, across the street from the nursing home. There used to be one car that showed up and parked for the nursing home, one car. And I believe he's going to put all the cars in the yard. Is that what I heard him say?
That's what, that's what the plan, if you haven't seen the plan.
No, I haven't seen.
You're more than welcome to see.
You're welcome to come down here and look at Attorney Solino's or look at my plan. But what they're saying, what the presentation to the board is, 100% of the parking for these nine residential units will be on the premises.
So that's nine units, probably two cars.
18, they're providing 18.
That doesn't sound feasible. That yard is not big enough for 20 cars.
You can hear the plan if you'd like.
So let me, let me just say this. The plan is stamped by a, we require, this board requires plans to be submitted stamped by a professional land surveyor. So the calculations are something that the board can rely on, that it's not me sitting in my office or Attorney Solino with a ruler saying, I think I can get 20 parking spaces. So this, who was this? Shawn, Shawn Michael Leach stamped it and says, I've reviewed it, I've looked at the dimensions of this, and they can get 18 parking spaces, off-street parking spaces on this lot.
I thought it was to get a parking on the street.
No.
That's why I showed up.
Absolutely.
I can't even park my car nearby my house daily.
Okay.
There's so many cars there now and the church.
It's not in operation anymore, is it?
No, no, no. I'm talking about the cars that are parked there now daily.
Yeah.
From President Avenue, from all, all. There's no parking in that neighborhood. And if he's going to bring in 20 more cars, there's not going to be a parking space around. I know he's going to park in the yard, but that's just going to bring more traffic. It's going to be a big mess.
Okay.
I respond.
I live across the street.
Thank you. Go to Attorney Solino.
Yeah, just in response to that comment. So the reason for this revised concept is to address that exact issue or question with the neighborhood. So it was to contain the parking on the site so as to not interfere with the parking on Hanover Street. So that's the reason for the second plan.
So that garage in the back is being raised?
That is correct, Mr. Frank. Yeah, it has to be in order to accommodate the traffic flow. I also think, I know the plan clearly depicts it, but I also think it's important that it's a drive-through site, if you will.
Right. The existing driveways on both sides are staying in effect?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and if we're thinking of granting, then it's express condition that the garage has to be raised.
Yeah.
No, I know it says, no, I know it says it. But I mean, just, if anybody's thinking about granting it, then that's express condition. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Madam, you had, oh, is she cutting you off? It was really the lady in the middle.
Me.
No, no, not you.
Back row.
We're still back there. You've got, you've got support back there.
So I live on Hanover Street as well. I'm opposed-
Can I have your name, please?
I'm Mary Palumbo.
Yeah. And what, what's your address, please?
Hanover Street.
Yeah. I need a street number.
Seven sixty five.
Are you Mary Louise?
Yes.
I'm Mary Louise.
Hi.
M1928. But it has a street address of?
Seven six five.
Seven six five, good. Thank you. Please continue. But you're just opposed.
I'm opposed-
Similar reasons?
No.
Oh.
Also because it's a single-family neighborhood zone.
Neighborhood, yes.
And I don't believe that the flavor of the neighborhood should be changed by allowing a nine-apartment building.
Okay. Is it the number nine that you're opposed to? Would you be, would you be-
Hugely opposed.
So if it was less than nine, is there some number that you would-
It would be less than three. That would be no.
Okay. Less than three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Madam?
Amy Cruz, seven eighty-one Hanover.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say my piece that my husband and I have worked extremely hard our entire lives to be able to afford our home in Highlands to keep our sons away from everything that comes with living in the inner city. And I just feel like this is going to bring it right to our doorstep where we're going to be looking off of our beautiful farmer's porch at a parking lot full of cars and tons of people everywhere. It's just to have an apartment complex right across the street from the home that I worked my entire life to buy is just devastating to me. So I just wanted to say my piece.
No, no, you need to. So I'd ask Attorney Salino to respond, but, and I'll, I'll ask the question again because that was a concern that I had. The building itself, please, the building itself is not changing.
No, I think that's an important piece of this, that there is no apartment building. The facade stays the same. The, I think, if I may respond to one other comment, too-
No, no, prove me three, you've heard your question, tell me what it is.
Certainly, certainly. So from my perspective, this use is less dense than a nursing home, to me. It's next door to a house of worship, near to the hospital. So I don't think we're changing the flavor of the neighborhood. I think we're trying to take a dilapidated structure, better it. That's what I think is happening.
Yeah, put, no, talk to me.
So the hospital is far away. We don't need your ambulances or anything, first of all. The boost temple is there. We do sometimes have problems parking because they have their events, they are very quiet and very good neighbors. And as far as the nursing home, when the nursing home was there, it was a very small nursing home. We're not talking Kielma or something like that. The residents never came outside, and there were maybe three staff at a time. So it was incredibly quiet place. Now we're talking about having nine potential families, crowds of people, I mean, a parking lot full of 20 cars in a single-family, beautiful neighborhood. It's just, to me, that is diminishing the Highlands. You know, people move to the Highlands for a reason, and if this continues to happen over and over, and I, I understand that that is a, a big house, too big for a single family, but a nine-apartment complex is just, to me, is just unfathomable.
Okay.
It's a lot to me.
No, I got it. I, but, I'll take some, but I'm just rhetorically, I ask the question, on a building like that, and you've said that it's a big, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for or against, but the board, this city, this board is going to be confronted with the repurposing of lots of buildings. And I know lots of neighborhoods don't necessarily like what's going to happen for the repurposing of it. But what do you do in a structure like that?
To, so when I, when I heard that this structure was up for sale, I assumed that it was going to be turned into apartments, but I thought it would be maybe three apartments.
Okay.
Nine apartments is just-
No, no, I, I got it. The petition is for nine, but I, but I'm just trying to, what else would happen?
I mean, it's not unreasonable to think that one family is going to be able to fill up that entire huge house, you know? But I just think it's, it's very-
I just asked the question because this has got, this topic, this issue will be coming before this board in the future. And I'm think, I'm asking you, who lives in the neighborhood, what do you, what else could happen to that building, especially when I have neighborhood groups come out and say they don't want something to happen, and the building is being deteriorating? You don't want that in your neighborhood, but what do you do? It's what I hear from you and the lady next, next to you, that, you know, nine is too much, but maybe three is good.
It would be better, that's for sure.
I got it, okay.
You know, I just, you know, to preserve, we need to try to preserve some technicality.
I understand that. I wish you sho-, I wish, I wish you and your neighbors got together and showed up at the auction and bid. But I wasn't there, I don't know. Let's see, who's next? The Quintel Boys, no? But I told you I'd let you speak last. Madam?
Teresa Furley, Seventy Stanley Street.
Yes.
I just want to support my neighbors. I think they're 100% right. Through the years that I've lived on this street, I've seen more and more cars, I've seen more and more children. It's not safe to have 18 more cars. I don't see, I can't see the parking lot filled with 18 cars, and I can see the potential for 20, 21 cars on our street. Our neighborhood cannot come in.
Wait, 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 let me stop you.
Yes.
You see, with, with, with 18 parking off-street, you see 21 cars on-street?
No, I'm saying you have 18 spaces for 18 cars. I see overflow coming. They can't park, there's no space in the parking lot. They have company, they have visitors, they're going to park on the street. We have children up and down the street with bicycles, with scooters. We have Derby High School, buses coming back and forth all day long. We have Conlon Maderis, we have Star, we have traffic all day long. We have tenants, we have children back and forth all day long. It's a concern to me to have nine families with 18 cars with limited parking.
Okay.
And I agree with my neighbors, to cut down on this space, to cut down on the apartment may be a reasonable solution. I just think nine apartments, our neighborhood cannot come safely.
Okay, thank you. Madam, you've got the last word. I wasn't, the gentleman next to you?
He's with me.
Okay. So you've got the last word. Go ahead.
Renee Maderis.
Yes.
I live at 57 Stanley. I am directly behind this nursing home, so I will be facing the parking lot. So I'm wondering, is there going to be any green space whatsoever, or is it just going to be all parking?
Okay. So I look at the plan and I see some trees, but I'm going to let Attorney Salino answer that question.
Yes, I'd be happy to answer, so-
And if, and if the board thinks about granting it, and if that's a consideration, that's something the board can do and say, "We want a vegetative water to..." But let's, let's see what their plan is right now. Yeah, one minute, ma'am, I'll, I'll let you speak in a minute. Go ahead.
Okay, so from a zoning plan perspective-
Yes.
Obviously, there's not a lot of focus on green and fencing and so on and so forth. But my client would be happy to accept the condition that requires the planting of trees, abrevites, or something else that's either imposed by this board or by the planning board in the site plan review process. I mean, that seems entirely reasonable in response to the neighborhood's concerns. We don't have any objection to that. I also think that something else that hasn't been brought up but should be brought up is lighting. I've heard a lot of concerns for the parking lot.
We were going to get to that, but that's something that's usually picked up-
Site plan.
By site plan, but why don't you address it now?
Yeah, I'd like to just address it.
We can talk about light infiltration.
Right, so I think the, the lighting really would help, the selection of the lighting would really help, I think, the neighbor's concerns. So we can certainly focus on downlighting, we can focus on low lighting as opposed to lighting on poles. There are a variety of lighting solutions that I think can thwart this idea that this is this parking lot that there's going to be all this activity in. I also think it's important, if I, I'm going off a little bit on a tangent, but-
No, go ahead. They need to hear, they need to hear what the options are.
Yeah, so to me, the lighting's important, the screening is fine. I also think it's important that these apartments will be nice apartments at a, what price point, Aaron?
About $2,400 each.
So it's, I say that because what he did on Dr. Dunn's house, what's the address of that house?
Oof.
The house on President Avenue around the corner, he cut it into two, and you get, what, $2,500?
$2,500.
No, no, I got that, so, but it's going to be, it'll be rental apart, it's not going to be converted to condominiums.
It's not converted to condominiums. My point is it's a nicer quality of tenant, in my view, because of the price point.
Got it.
If the tenants still have control.
No, no, I, I got it, I got it. But I want, I want the neighbors to hear this. I mean, we're looking at it from a land use point of view.
Right.
But that's why I want as much information to them, so they know what's going on.
Yeah, I think it can be a nice concept. I think it's certainly being vilified, and I understand if I lived in these houses, I would feel the way these folks feel.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I don't think it's an apartment building as it's being presented. I think it's a nice historical structure that we're trying to rehabilitate and fit out for this purpose.
Did that, did that answer your question about the, not at all?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
So I want confirmation, there's going to be no Section 8 rentals in this apartment.
Oh, absolutely not.
So wait, wait, time, time out. Time out.
I know that's going to be a little bit of this.
This board, we have no authority to say, you're hearing, you're hearing a representation made by him.
So the parking, in and out, in and out, as my neighbor said, we've got five stations up the street constantly. The ambulance is going to-
The in and out's going to be on Highland Avenue. It's not going to be overflowing into Hanover.
So there's no accidents from Hanover Street?
No, there's a, there's a driveway on Hanover Street. It goes right through.
Oh, the existing driveway on Hanover.
So they're going to be going in and out of Hanover Street to park. I'm going to be staring at a parking lot of 18 cars. There's no green space. Where are those tenants going to be?
They just said they'll put green space, but go ahead.
No, they're going to put, they're going to put fancy edging.
Well, we can make-
To, to try, try to hide the cost. So where are the neighbors going to be? Those, the tenants. Where, where are they going to be?
I'm sorry.
To have green space. The structure isn't changing, which doesn't matter because it faces Highland Avenue and it faces an off-bath. So it doesn't matter if the structure changes. To us, we're on Hanover Street or Stanley. So what matters to us is staring at a parking lot and all these neighbors who could potentially have children, and where are they going to be? They're going to be in a parking lot. And the cars are going to be in and out, in and out, and they're going to have visitors, and they're going to have to park where? On the street. So I'm paying four grand a year for taxes to live in the Highlands as a single mother to give my kid a better life to stare at a parking lot and have traffic all day and all night.
I understand your concern. That's the reality of what's being proposed.
They're going to lower my tax, tax prices? Because they're going to, this is going to bring down the neighborhood.
I understand your concern.
The property value, my resale value, if I wanted to sell my property, it's going to bring down. I don't understand why it has to be none. It's a large structure, we all understand that.
Their proposal, their proposal is for nine.
Right. Which I get it, he wants his bank for his buck. $2,200 a month each apartment, it's a lot of money. I get it. And I understand that rehab is going to be a lot of money. But be fair to the people that have to live there, that currently pay taxes, that pay mortgages, that have children. It doesn't need to be nine, nine apartments. Make it four, make it five, so that there is green space, there is yard, there is parking.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Wait, 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 you already talked, that lady behind you hasn't had the opportunity. Madam, go ahead. Yeah?
Should I say my name and address?
I need your name and address, please.
My name's Gail LaFerry, or my husband, Dr. Anthony Caprio. We own the house at 721 Highland Avenue.
Yes.
There's a couple of things that I was concerned of that I want to bring it up.
No, please don't.
We pay $10,000. But we have a huge parking lot. And in time, my husband, within 20 years, has planted abrevites and gardens and such. And I just wanted to bring up landscaping could be a factor here to make it look more curb appeal for the neighborhood. The monks have been wonderful. In the same time span of 20 years we've lived there, I think they were there six months before us, with beautiful flower gardens. They've made a parking lot where it was grass initially. They're very respectful to ask us or tell us they're going to have a celebration. They're very helpful when we've been searching, needing their help. And I have to say, as a compliment, Mr. Tater bought Dr. Dunn's house, and we were there 20 years, so we know how Dunn has done, put a lot of work and effort into that house. And he has wonderful tenants there, and he has only two units that he utilizes with wonderful tenants. But the concern comes with parking that we had and the amounts of people that you might have coming into the house. So my question would be, is there any solution to how it's configured, the inside of the house, to make it a little more like the situation at Dr. Dunn's house, which is just as big as a house, is just as big as my house with two people in it? So people in the neighborhood have different size houses, some people have families. We're 84 and 74. So it's all different, but we're concerned about maybe thinking about the configuration of the house to accommodate less people, and maybe curb appeal could be thought of, and how maybe to make it so it's reasonable. That's a cut-through street, Hanover Street. So besides the church, people are going and cutting through all the time. And I can remember the time that people sometimes aren't watching out for the kids. Or, or you could be on a sidewalk and get hit in that area, just like Mary's sister did and almost died a few years back, just walking President Avenue from her house on Hanover. But I'm kind of on a scale here because I know what a good job he has done with the people he has on Hanover Street. But there's other apartments there without parking facilities. But the owners live in the Highlands, so they're there every day watching or fixing the house, which we realize he's in the neighborhood now, so he would perhaps be there more often. So the concern is parking, curb appeal, and perhaps a thought of configuration differently in the house to accommodate less people.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Paul Blank, and I live at 707 Highland Avenue.
Okay.
Right on the corner of President and Highland.
Yes.
So their property is a couple of doors, uh, three doors down. Well, I, he's also, he's a two-family, a big giant on the corner of Hanover property, abuts my property. The two families that live there, great, never a problem. My concern, when I heard that it was up for auction, who's going to buy it? Who's going to win that bid? And what's it going to become? When I heard it was going to be nine apartments, I was very concerned. I said, "It's, I'm glad somebody bought it, but can't they go like seven units?" Because I know the lot real well. I'm in favor of this project. I'm glad someone who I already abut that owns the property maintains a great home, a beautiful property, that abuts mine. My concern, what was going to happen on the corner there? When that, who's going to buy that building? I'm glad I found out it was this guy that bought the building. And I'm in favor of the project. I understand nine units is a lot. Seven? I'd be all for it. But three is absurd for a project that huge. And there's a park directly across the street, for crying out loud. There's plenty of green space. I mean, I realize, nobody hardly talks on Highland Avenue. I mean, it's seldom when there's a religious function at the temple. But I'm in favor of this project, and, you know, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Chairman, one thing we haven't really discussed, what, what is going to be, we're, we're using the term unit. What would comprise the, each units?
Yeah, the proposal is six one-bedroom units and three two-bedroom units. And that's what's on the plan.
Which means that probably the number of cars would not even-
Get to that.
Come, come, come up to that. And the nature of the one-bedroom, you're not going to have families residing in it.
And we'd be lucky if we get 11 cars in there.
Yeah.
One of the questions that I have, and this, this goes back to a neighbor concern, especially from Hanover Street. Yes, I, I understand you'd be willing to do something with some vegetative barrier, but I'm, I'm a contractor. I'm looking at these plans. You don't have a lot of space between the edge of your parking and the parking lot on the Hanover Street side, and even less in that northeast corner on the Stanley Street side. So it's nice to say you might be able to plant something, but I don't see anything substantial enough to mitigate the situation that we're hearing from some of the folks right across the street.
Okay. I mean, that obviously, I, well, I think you understand it because I know what you do for work, but you put out a yield plan, you bring it to zoning. We have these concerns. If we, you know, keep going in the direction we are going, I would ask that we have a continuance to create a different concept to come back before you, and we can address that concern, Mr. Prayer, more appropriately. But obviously, when you're in a concept phase, it's not a-
And, and I realize we're, we're kind of tipping over into, into site plan in that case, but I think we've got to look at the whole project and, and the impact on the neighborhood. That's all. I'm not going to, you know, make a motion that's going to specify planting, so.
No, no, make it a condition if that's where we're going. But I'm also hearing the neighborhood being concerned about these nine units on this particular project. I don't know whether I just heard Attorney Salino saying you wanted to table it or something to come back, or-
Well, I, a couple of things.
Think about reconfiguring or reduce the numbers. It's not, all I'm saying is, this is the Zoning Board of Appeals, the petition is for nine units. We've got some parking, you're hearing some of the neighbors from, "Yes, I like it." You're hearing some of the neighbors from, yes, I like it, three units, five units, seven. I mean, it's not, let's make a deal. It's, I wanna make, it's an investment. It's going to be a large investment on the part of the petitioner to redo this, but I also, the board has to be very sensitive and concerned about the people that are living in the neighborhood. And I know that Aaron, I know that Mr. Tetrel lives in the neighborhood and is investing there. His past history has been stellar, but the, that woman who lives across the street and that man who lives across the street, they're gonna be there.
Understood.
So if you need time to talk to them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they might want a five-minute recess to talk to them.
If you wanted to talk to me...
So, well, I'm not opposed...
You tell me what you need.
Not opposed to that, but it's a little bit tough when you're the petitioner and there's no objection in the record to walk into this, right? Because we didn't know what the objection was gonna be.
Attorney Salino, I've been there, I understand, and I'm saying now this is the first time that these people are hearing, you get a chance to voice it. Whether or not you need to table it to another meeting, to meet with them and come up with some, if there is any amicable solution, or if you want, table it for five minutes and go outside until, I don't know.
Yeah, um, what I like to do, if I may, is Mr. Tomlin's gonna say a couple of words. He's the engineer on the project. And then if anyone else has anything to say, and I'll talk to Aaron briefly.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to say, prepare the plan. Initially, when we prepared the plan, we were asking for relief of the parking requirement of the two spots per unit. We were requesting 12 rather than the 18, given the unit count that we were proposing. Uh, the six one-bedrooms and the, and the three two-bedrooms. So we were proposing a parking count, basically one spot per bedroom, which is probably more realistic than the 18 that are required for the nine units with six of them being single bedrooms. We had a plan all drawn up that way. When it was filed, there was, we got some feedback from the city engineer and stuff like that, and that's why we revised the plan to satisfy the parking requirement, because parking was an issue. Listening to the abutists tonight, it seems like they don't wanna look at a parking. They wanna look at green space, which is what we had on the original plan. We can provide 12 off-street parking spots without really changing much of what's out there in terms of the existing driveway. That can be done. So if it's a matter of...
But you're reducing the number of parking spaces.
Which would be done by special permit, which is what was filed.
I got it. Well, I shouldn't say I got it. Yes, I understand. I don't know, the board members, I think, also understand it. But it's the number, it's the count that I think we're getting into, single-family residence district, we want nine units, we're gonna redo. So yes, we can do it, but I don't know. It's like a quadratic equation. Here we go. What are we doing, where are they going? Go ahead, Peter. Attorney Salino.
Yes, I have quadratic equation. That's...
I mean, it's the only way I can say it. It just like keeps on going, let's find...
That's a new one for the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Chairman.
It is. This is the zoning board of appeals, not a mathematics class.
All right. So I am gonna make a motion to continue this petition, if I may, to the October meeting to go look at the concept a little more closely and address some of the feedback we've heard this evening.
Maybe meet with the neighbors, yeah, okay. Well, I don't, so...
Say one more thing.
Yes, ma'am?
We're not opposed to apartments, because when it went up for auction, of course your thought is, my God, it's gonna be a methadone clinic, it's gonna be a group home, it's gonna be, you know, whatever that you don't want in your neighborhood. So we're not opposed to the apartments, but to say 12 parking spaces, it's one bedrooms, it might be one car. Now, at that income, that price point, it's a two-person, it's couples, more than likely.
And they don't have one.
And they have two cars.
But the count, there was only three two-bedrooms. Everything else was one bedroom.
But a one-bedroom at that price point is a probably a married couple with two cars.
Or a young professional.
So, so this is, so this, this is what I think. I've got a couple of years on Attorney Salino.
Just a couple.
Just a couple. And, and he said he walked in here without knowing that there was opposition, and there was no opposition as a matter of record prior to tonight. Whether or not he's going to invite you all and say, let's talk about what we can do to get this done, I'm certainly not gonna tend to Attorney Salino out of practice. But there's enough of you here that I think you need to talk to him and Aaron and say, it's our neighborhood, we want you, but, but he could say, get lost, I want nine units, come back in October, and the board will decide yes or no. But it was important, it is, if anybody watches the meetings, this is very important for neighborhoods to come out and voice their opinions and let the board know and let the petitioners know what the impact you see for your neighborhoods. It is extremely important. By doing nothing, we don't know. I go park out there and take a look at things during the course of the day, it's not the same as living there. You live there.
Highland Avenue, you're correct. There's many parking spaces on Highland Avenue, but if you're going to the Hanover parking entrance, there's nowhere to park.
It's an issue. Hanover, there's a big difference, Highland Avenue, Hanover Street. Absolutely.
The Buddhist temple, if they have a function, there's no parking.
Rare occasion. It's not, it's not a daily occurrence.
Mass at holy name church every Saturday and Sunday, several times a day, no parking whatsoever. So I think, we're not opposed to the apartments, but I just think maybe a compromise on the number of apartments.
Thank you. Attorney Salino, so your motion is to continue it to the October 20th meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the board, that's his motion. Do we have, uh, anybody wanna entertain that motion and say, yes, a motion to grant to the October 20th meeting?
Motion to grant.
Joe Pereira, motion to grant the continuance to the October, second by Dan Dupere. Any discussion, hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira, Chairman Assad, yes. This petition will be October 20th meeting. Hopefully, you'll talk to Attorney Salino or Aaron between, maybe there'll be some compromise, and if not, the board will decide one way or the other. Thank you very much for coming out this evening. Agenda item number six. Hector Angel, care of attorney, Joseph J. Machado, 209 Manchester Street, map I-23, lot 25. The applicant seeks a variance to convert an existing three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling. Okay, can we take it all outside, please? Thank you. Excuse me, I'll be right there.
It's all good.
Excuse me, can you take that conversation outside? Thank you. So we'll get back to Hector, Hector Angel, care of attorney, Joseph J. Machado, 209 Manchester Street, map I-23, lot 25. The applicant seeks a variance to convert an existing three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling, waiving all zoning requirements in an A2 apartment district. Good evening. Will you identify yourself on the record, please?
David Durot.
Okay.
I'm the property manager of this project.
First name David, last name?
Durot, D-U-R-O-T.
D-U-R-O-T, thank you.
Address.
An address, where do you?
Oh, my, my business is at 117 Martha Street in Fulmer.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, I don't see your name anywhere on any of the, any idea where Attorney Machado was?
Yeah, he couldn't make it to Mexico.
Okay.
He had to, he was, he had to time, like, he told them, he had to time it.
Yeah.
And he had to go find it.
Oh, okay.
I'm, sorry, I'm Hector Angel.
Yes.
45 highest street.
But so you're the guy who owns the property?
Yes, but...
And you're authorizing him to speak on your behalf?
I do.
Then I'm happy.
Thank you.
Thank you. So go ahead. David, tell us what you wanna do.
Okay, so this was a complete gut job of a three-family?
Yes.
On Manchester Street, and each unit's 897 square feet.
Yes.
I wanna create a two-bedroom in a, in the basement, which has three egresses, one, um, one, two windows, 36 by 30, and a walkout into the backyard.
This is the zoning board of appeals. That's an issue for the building inspector. But I understand what you wanna do, so we'll do it, and we won't do it, but we'll listen to you, but I wanna make sure that you understand.
The building inspector can't...
No, 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 no. You're here because the building inspector said you can't do it.
Correct.
But the things that you're talking about in terms of specifications and what's there, this board has zero authority to talk...
Okay, this is my first time ever doing this.
I got it, I got it. So just sit back, relax. I just wanna be clear that if this, and this is why my opening speech is five minutes long, I want to make sure that you understand who we are, what we have authority to do. So you're telling me you have three means of egress, the windows, that's an issue for the building inspector to tell us, yes, no, so long as you can get a certificate of occupancy. If we grant it, that's between you and the building inspector. This is only, I wanna do three to four, that's what we're gonna listen to.
That's basically what we wanted to do.
So please continue.
We wanted basically to take this three-unit and turn it into a four, a four-unit.
Okay.
Um, to alleviate parking on Manchester Street, we are planning on putting in a six-car parking lot on the side yard. Cause it's surrounded by four families, five families, and six families.
Is there off-street parking currently?
Is there off, there is no off-street parking. Actually, I apologize, there is a garage.
Yeah.
That needs a new roof, but that does have capacity of two.
Is that gonna keep that, gonna keep the...
We're gonna fix that up as well.
So you're gonna have, that will be used for parking, two off-street parking there?
Correct.
So you're gonna have a total of eight off-street parking spaces, six and seven?
But the street is also 30 feet wide. But a lot of the, a lot of the multifamilies in the area park on that street because of its width.
Says 50 feet wide.
50 feet wide?
That's, that's a right...
It says Manchester Public 50 feet wide street.
Oh my God, I got my tape measure out, I came out to 30.
That's, that's a public right of way.
It may be 50, but it's built to 30, yeah.
It's pretty substantial.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and the parking, so the parking lot is gonna be between the garage and the house, is what you're...
Correct. Actually, we're gonna come off of Tashami Street. We, I had an excavator come in and clear out the entire yard.
Okay. So off to Cunshus Street?
Yeah.
And then we'd have to obviously get something so they could cut the curb and we can bring the driveway up.
So curb cut will be city council petition?
Yeah.
Not zoning board?
Okay, no, I understand that, I'm just, just telling you, Mike.
No, no. Sir, I've got it. I speak this way about the zoning board because some, lots of people come before us and think that we can, I'm the mayor, with the, with the city council, with the planning board, it's the zoning board of appeals, that's all we can deal with.
I just wanna create a, a nice atmosphere for this, for this property, cause the neighbors around us are all single families with their own driveways.
Okay.
And they come out in droves and they're like, thank you.
And it's currently, and it's currently a three, three-unit building. We're gonna add one apartment, and the one apartment is going in the basement.
That's correct.
Okay.
And there will be no mechanicals in the basement.
If the board grants it, it's gonna... Okay. Members of the board, any questions? Go ahead.
Well, there's no parking designated on the plan, so we don't know if six cars could fit.
Condition, site plan review, they got it, they don't have it? Right?
But if we make a condition that it goes, then it doesn't go forward if they...
Correct. If you remember, the one that we did, Spring Street, the one, the one that we just granted, the five-unit, we said, the other one, if you have it, then you can have it, if you don't have it, then you don't have it.
Exactly. If approved, they could cover it.
That's the, but you can make it a condition, eight, and it has to be subject to site plan review, and because it's a basement apartment, it's gonna be subject to occupancy issued from the building inspector.
Mm-hmm.
And fired apartment.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it has to go through all of those occupancy reviews that is outside the scope of the zoning board of appeals. Anyone else, any other comments? No?
No, I'm, I'm kind of in line with John. I mean, I'd, I'd be happier if there was some idea what the parking was gonna be, so then it was, it was measured out, but if we can, we can cover it if we wanna move forward.
That's correct. The same way we did on that last, the, last week, last month.
I see how that turned out.
I don't know how it turned out. Anyway, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay? Members of the board, what's your opinion? Did they met the, have they met the standard of granting of a variance to convert? The A2 use allows a three, four, that's a multi-family, so that's not an issue, it's really dimensional requirements. It's only a 5,0027, but the lot is what it is. It's a pre-existing non-conforming anyway, subject to the building inspectors issuing, and every other department issuing. But if you say no?
This is a very, could this be a special permit continuation of a, of non-conforming?
The petition is a variance, so let's do it with a variance, I don't...
Yeah, I just wondered...
Yeah, no, no, I don't know. I don't, I didn't do enough research on it. I looked at the plan, looked at the application, and said, this is where we are with it, but if we do do it, parking has to be a consideration and inspection, the habitability from the building inspector needs to be a condition. Okay?
There's no change in the footprint.
No, everything internal is, right, everything confirmed, everything is internal, yes. So that's what we've got.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance conditional upon site plan review with special emphasis on the proposed parking availability and, I think I was...
That if, yeah, so the condition being the parking availability, eight, eight off-street parking spaces, if they can't get eight, then...
Well, two in a garage.
Yeah, but a total, but a total of eight off-street parking spaces.
Yeah, correct.
Right? Total of eight off-street, if they can't mathematically...
Two in a garage, six on the ground.
If they, mathematically, if they can't get it...
I mean, ultimately, though, I mean, the parking on the street, again, is such a wide street, but if, right now, there's no, there's no...
So the condition, so the board's condition is you need eight off-street parking spaces. If you don't have eight off-street parking spaces, if site plan review calculating however you're going to put the eight unit, if you can't get eight, then you're not gonna get the fourth unit.
Okay. Fair enough.
It's gotta be subject to inspections.
That's fine.
If approved.
If approved, yeah. I mean, if the site plan review goes back...
Well, if approved.
So that was...
I already hired the people to come and start doing it. If we get approved on this, they're gonna come in and start doing it anyways.
Okay.
Well, with approval.
Subject to the approval of the board, please.
Yes.
So Jim Corkins made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That was Joe Pereira, Joe Pereira's second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
No.
John Frank, no. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Yes. Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Dan Dupere, yes. Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that, this petition is granted with those conditions, subject to site plan review. If they say no, you, you may not have anything.
It's all good.
Okay.
I still have it.
Thank you so much, guys.
Okay. Agenda item number seven.
Forget your phone.
It wouldn't have been all good.
He's the property manager, he knows better.
I know, I know.
Okay. So let's get back to Meneses Vivaldo, care of attorney, John R. Mitchell, 1951 Pleasant Street, map J-111. The applicant seeks a variance to convert the existing three-unit apartment building with one commercial unit into four residential apartment units in an S single-family zoning district, waiving all dimensional setback, use, and parking requirements. Attorney Mitchell?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Mitchell, 105 Bang Street, Fulmer, representing Mr. Meneses. And we're here, this is, compared to some of the others you've had tonight, not quite as extensive. This is a unit, it's one of the old storefronts on Upper Pleasant Street. In fact, there's two or three buildings around it where the storefronts have already been, yeah, right next to Cofflin. Couple of the others have already been converted from storefronts to residential. It was used until a couple of months ago, kinda commercial, it was a part-time real estate business, correct, in there?
Office.
Office. Mr. Meneses would like to, he lives in back, and there's two apartments on the first floor, two upstairs. He lives in the rear. He wants to convert this. He's a disabled veteran. He's moved here from Boston, sought out a property that, you know, was affordable to him, wherever he wanted to live or not. And he's looking to rehab it, he's already talked to, hasn't applied yet, but he's talked to the Veterans Administration about getting some help to make an ADA compliant apartment. That's what he's looking to do, have corridors wide enough. There's a chance he may end up more disabled, and he wants something a little bit bigger, bigger rooms, wider corridors, more room to maneuver, a better bathroom, that type of things, so...
It's gonna be on that, it's gonna be where the storefront is.
Right there.
So as I'm driving Pleasant Street and I see the storefront, that's gonna be the unit.
That'll be the unit.
And then it goes back in the back.
Yeah.
Odd-shaped lot.
It's very odd-shaped and certainly very, you know, they did a remarkable job fitting that building on it whenever they did it, but it's...
And that's what's going on.
Like a geometry project. But they did fit it on, and he's lived there for three years now, you know, wants to make that his home, and they're moving there after some renovations, so that's what he's asking the board to do.
Okay. Yeah, it's in the S District, and I, I guess I, I probably talk too much from experience. But in this neighborhood, there isn't one lot over there that meets the S District. The planning board should probably rezone it, but I hadn't, when I was over there, when I was on that side, I went looking up and trying, and there's nothing in that district that meets it.
There's all three families, a floor, or multiple anyway, so...
So, I think the, you're stuck with this building, you've got that unit there at the bottom that was commercial use, pre-existing non-conforming, so we're gonna turn it into a residential unit that's more conforming to a residential area. It's really, so I don't know, that's, they're asking for a variance and looking for those requirements, the waivers, so... Any questions, members of the board, that you wanna? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Uh, there's no on-street parking whatsoever.
No, no, although the neighborhood, because the lots are so big, there's not the same problem like Manchester Street, it's, there's parking generally available on the street.
And when I was, I was there a couple of times, it seemed that there was lots of on-street parking, especially on Pleasant Street, heading down.
There's some big lots there, I mean, the house is a big, big size.
Yeah, but there's no big old...
A lot of stairs, though, in most of those houses.
Especially on the north side.
Yes.
Anyway, so that's what we've got. Motion to grant, motion to deny, convert to a four-year, three to four.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, Dan Dupere, any second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Got it.
I don't know, so my left ear was working, so I got, I got Jim Corkins for the second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. That petition's granted.
Thank you.